This is the zoning board of appeals meeting. It is Tuesday, March 8th, 2016, and it's about 7:15. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over.
New business?
Yep, want to do your monthly finance update?
Yes. That first page I just stuck in there some items to approve for next month's meeting. If you want to just see how we do tonight and then...
Okay.
Just look up again. Okay, so revolving account. By the way Gina and...Gina, myself, and Shawn met with the Finance and Advisory Board Saturday, the 27th, presented our budget. We gave them an update on...if you look at the second page of the revolving account. When we submitted the budget back in December, I think it was 76 hours. So from December 1st till the end of February, it was 133.5. So we gave them that update. The expense sheet, what's next? So when you look at under supplies, we have $16.62 left in expenses. So anything in the...to the left, the 190 where it says remaining. Next sheet.
Oops, she lost the sheet. Is it?
Something just slipped right out to your right.
Right there anyway, yes.
Oh, yeah, but remaining's right there. No, she's on the right page.
Where it says remaining 192.52, that's for the telephone. So that I have to save because the telephone usually comes up to about 387. So if you look on top, I got 400. So technically, that has to be saved for the phone. So we have 1662. So when you look at the warrant we have, I do need to order other stuff, of course, before the fiscal year ends, June 30. So what happens with that for you guys? It will come out of revolving. Once we use the 816 expense. It just doesn't cover everything.
I've always wondered about the phone. I have a silly question. I'm just my own, being curious. So is it the town of Georgetown that has like one phone system and the bill's paid by the town or it comes out of the ZBA's? Your landline comes out of the ZBA's budget?
They use Verizon.
Yeah.
Everybody has a line item. And I get that phone bill. They're always behind if you look at the expense sheet. Like we just got January's.
Gotcha.
On March 2nd.
Okay.
So I won't get February's. So you know, it's always behind. And then when the June phone bill comes in, that always has to be, you know, covered or...
Is that for your line? Is that what they do? I think that was the question, is how they allocate the total bill by line?
These are the totals for our line.
So how many calls came in, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, on the line?
Yeah. Yeah, they can look up, you know, what calls went out, what calls come in, all that. And so sometimes we have long distance and sometimes we don't. I try not to call back on our, you know, I've got some calls from York and sometimes I kind of wait for the call back. If it's important, I'll just call.
Okay.
The warrant is for the office phone. Went, so I spoke to Gina and so I just need a motion. If you look at the attached, get to it under warrants, okay.
The department has to pay for their own phone?
Yeah, we paid for our phone. Well, we did, we got a new desktop computer.
Uh huh.
That came out of the...the four computers, town had four computers too. So we did get that. And last time, in 2000s...
I'm just surprised that each department pays very little.
In 2007, we purchased our own desktop computer.
Mm-hmm.
So...um, so I looked on Staples, at WBMA, everywhere we order from in the office, and I couldn't find a single phone, just one without all these handsets and...
I can't...
More than...they were just too expensive. So I'm like, I'm just going to go to Best Buy because we used to do this. You can use the Staples card, but I found the best deal at Best Buy, so I just bought it myself and you put in for reimbursement. I mean, we don't do it all the time, but in cases like these.
So you need a motion to approve that?
Huh?
You need a motion?
We need a motion.
So moved?
All right, make the motion, the amount and the account and what it's for.
Yeah.
I think, right?
Motion to reimburse.
Yep, motion to reimburse the $57.99 expense for the Panasonic KX TG phone.
From...
I'll second that, that's close enough.
From account?
From the revolving account?
Nope.
1176.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Went with the KXTG 6591T. I would have gone with it. That's just me.
You should have brought your non-exempt status so you didn't have to pay the tax, which we can't reimburse.
The last phone was like a $14 phone and the button is just there.
Worked for a week and died.
I just find it probably inefficient.
Motion for...the reason I have these separated out is because we had certain people at business, we had certain people in industrial, and we had certain people at profit. So...
We are looking for the sheets after the expenses, right? General...
Motion to...first page.
Oh, we'll go back here.
Everything with industrial. We're going to delay, right?
Going in order.
Can buy loan apps.
Yeah.
They dual sided, so it could...
Passing this back. All signed? I think everyone's signed.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the business minutes. Email on 2/17/16 or what was the date? Oh, that was, was that the date?
The 32nd.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, the business meetings, a meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2016. That were mailed on 2/17.
2nd.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
I abstain.
Can it pass with three?
Yep, actually, talked to Constance today about the other ones.
Okay.
I didn't know for Dave, and he said, no.
Okay.
As long as the three were present, you can do three.
Motion carries?
Also make a motion to approve the hearing minutes for 36 Prospect Street for February 2nd.
2nd, that would be Gina, Jeff, and Sharon.
Yep, 2nd.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
I abstain.
Dave and Shawn abstain.
Motion carries?
And on the minutes for industrial way, I'm not comfortable moving on that yet, so...
Can we put those in the next agenda?
Yep.
So those will go on April 5th.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
So is the economic development...
Economic Development Committee, I sent Jim Lacy a...an agenda last week. I don't know, maybe they just, maybe it slipped their mind or they couldn't make it. I haven't heard from anybody either, so...
Okay.
General correspondence, I got a notice of intent for 48 Sorel Street from... This is to construct a garage addition and a shed and a buffer zone. So it's a five acre lot. I just kind of tried to copy what I could copy, but I checked it out with Steve and it's...the setbacks are fine. As far as what they're doing. 13 Meadowbrook Plain, we got a notice of intent. Second page, it says buffer zone addition to existing single family dwelling. This...I just need to scale the law and I just let Steve know that they need to stay 20 feet from the side in the alley zone.
What are they building? Oh, patio and...
In addition.
So the building inspector would get that anyway, right?
Yeah, it's just, he said, when I get the notice of intent, I just give him the comments. Under other, can we approve this for April 5th for business? These items? Well, why don't we wait? Because I don't know if we're going to get into fees or not, if we're going to have time to get into fees. I mean, should we just move back to...
We can, you can put it on and maybe skip over it.
Okay, and then we got less, less coming in to meet you guys.
Yeah, I mean, we've gone through these fees before. We just have to decide whether we want to raise them. At the, at the, the meeting that we attended on, I forgot what date that was, about Saturday, there were some questions from the committee on whether our fees were high enough. I think we all realize that the fees aren't going to cover the, you know, the difference in her pay, but I said we would look at the fees to make sure that we're, they're reasonable and if we can up them a little bit, because we haven't upped them in a long time, so maybe we can up them a little bit. We have the right to increase them as necessary, so that's why this is on here.
Where's the document with our fees? It's in the bucket.
The Rules of Procedure.
Oh, the Rules of Procedure that we emailed.
We have increased...
Are you looking for what ours are?
We have increased some of them, actually, but over time, we've increased certain...
Here's the...
But not recently.
Yeah. Here's the...
Two years ago.
Everybody take a...yeah, just pass them down. Put that with your fee. I just realized I didn't print out the fee on the last page of the application with what our fees are.
Yes.
So...
So we haven't amended any of these since 2009.
And we did the, it was the wireless, it was the cell, cell tower wireless antenna.
Wow.
Yeah, so we can, I feel like that's why I'm...
Seems like yesterday.
That's why I'm saying, I think we can probably increase them a little bit.
It's also probably prudent to mention that North Andover, Amesbury, Newburyport probably have substantial applications in comparison to...
I checked out West Newbury and they were right, they were actually low.
Newburyport.
And Newburyport was low.
They're low.
Really?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Well...
It's right in front. And I attached the...
No, but the number of applications.
Oh.
Yeah, that's probably higher, so...
Right, so they can keep their revenue lower to make...I'm sorry.
No, no.
My bad on the definition.
I mean, the thing to keep in mind, well, we'll talk about this at this next meeting more too, is that, you know, these are here a couple of variable costs, not her, you know, Patty's fixed costs. So when you look at the budget, the fixed cost should be covered.
Mm-hmm.
Or, you know, she shouldn't be exceeding, you know, the budget for the fixed costs with any of the fees, with or without a hearing. In my opinion, this is all variable costs, so this should reflect the true additional cost to administer a hearing associated with any of these.
Yep.
If they're way out of whack, they're way out of whack. If they're not, they're not. And partially, it's got to be subsidized. You know, my feeling is on single family stuff, I don't think somebody should be paying $600 to ask for a special permit or variance, so...
But they're paying.
Anyway, when you, as we look at it, she gave us some other information to maybe look at.
Yeah.
Between now and next month, so just sort of...
So yeah, look through this and be prepared to talk about it next month.
And just some comments from FinCom from, like Wayne was like, I was explaining how an attorney comes in, like I met with Mr. Janos and he set up an appointment to go through the application so that this goes smoother and everything's complete and although they don't have to, they could just file with the town clerk. He was saying, but you should get paid for that, but it's, but it's, what I was saying to him, but it's during office hours.
So we had come up, we had talked a little bit about, and this is something we can talk about later too, is when there's appointments required, that she takes these appointments that are associated with the hearing and doesn't do them during her regular office hours. She can either stay later or come in on a different day and have an appointment day and that, those hours can come out of revolving because then it's more straightforward. She's working on a hearing, comes out of revolving, and that's a way that we can help, especially if we can't increase her.
We can actually itemize the amount of hours she's using for that particular purpose.
Right, and then she can still do the office work during her office hours.
Yep.
I'll hold my comments.
Go ahead.
Until April. I mean, that makes sense, but I am fundamentally opposed to using fees to pay for operating costs. I think that's a disgrace.
I mean, and I tried to explain, it just, it just depends, like I met with Attorney Janos that's here for this hearing that we're going to start and...
But it's a public service and I think the public should be entitled to receive services during hours and if we're not paying staff people...
It is during, it's not her office hours. She has set office hours. It's still going to be during regular business hours, but she's going to make special time, so it's not cutting into her office hours.
Because of revolving hours are related to...
No, I understand, but I think that that's a public disservice to tell the people who are the attorneys or whoever, but you can only come on a Thursday between 2:00 and 4:00 PM because those are, like I just, but I can hold my comments and be more formulated than April.
I'll be on Tuesdays and Thursdays. If you want to talk about your hearing, you got to come some other time by appointment only.
Yeah, I just think that's absurd and I think it's obnoxious and the town needs to pay for what the town says.
Well, you should have been here on that Saturday. Next time we want you to come, so...
You know what, I had a...
No, I understand, but I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad thing you weren't here. I'm saying, next time, we want you here.
Yeah, well, I don't, I think they're going to do what they do, so...
No, but it would be great to have, I'm, I'm saying this in all sincerity, it would have been great to have your voice there.
And if I didn't have medical appointments, I would have been.
And maybe you can write an email and we can forward it along.
Sure, I can do that.
Yeah.
If they're willing to hear it.
I mean, I think it's important, Sharon, I do.
Okay.
I mean, do you agree? I think, I think...
And it's hard, you know, when you're sitting in front of them. I get, I, I'm fine talking to you guys on, for this, but when you're sitting in front of all these, you know, asking for trying to explain what you do.
If I can get a quick debrief without violating the meeting law, then I'll formulate something in writing, but the only time we went, I remember we had like 10 minutes and it wasn't, they weren't there to listen to anything, so...but I couldn't have made it.
And I'm not saying that's a bad thing. We're volunteers and we do the best we can.
So do you want to put off, so fees, Rules of Procedure, all this, all this, well, building inspector's coming in, fees, the Rules of Procedure, we did the reappointment letter, so Sharon's going to put in for reap, go to a one-year term and Shawn Dean is going to take the five-year term.
Okay.
We can do a little switch.
Yeah.
That's good.
So we already, we already did that. Unless someone, unless someone files an application tomorrow.
Going down with the bidding.
I'd suggest that Patty maybe schedule her meeting business down in the other room for this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to do training, like if, you know, if Jeff is going to do training.
Not going to perform training.
What, I was going to ask, I was going to ask, what is training? What is this training that you speak of?
We used to, years before you guys were here, when a new board member came on board, we'd have a, just a meeting to go over the bylaw and how things run and what you can and can't do and things like that at a, at a business meeting. And we just got away from doing that.
Who facilitates that?
Well, the chairman will do it, but I don't know. I think...
Just found out about it, okay.
I think the person who, who talks the most at the meetings would be good.
No, Patty, I mean, I'm fine going over the, going over some of the stuff, but also we can talk about the, whatever courses are available. I think it's, it's good. Some of those courses are good, we can go through those.
Yeah.
And it's worth, I don't know what, I'd have to go through the schedule and see if there's any that are even within a reasonable driving. They used to be over in Haverhill and they're not anymore, so you go...
I even called Elaine, uh, DHCD and said, you know, can they bring some back up on the North Shore? You know, they have one in Haverhill, but it's not, you know, they have one. And, because I went to some of them and we went to Special Apartments, Variances, all at, at Neco and now it's just like, they just...
I actually also have some good published material that...
Yeah, and I have copies.
I think I gave you some stuff, but I should, from way back, that's actually still very, very relevant, so I'll, I'm going to pull, I'll, I'll pull all this together and we can talk about.
Because we have like the vested rights and remember that?
Yeah, I got a bunch of stuff, actually. I'll dig it all out.
Okay.
So that'll be at the April meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Gina will do a four-day offsite retreat of zoning.
Yes.
Absolutely.
And if I have another room...
Bring coffee.
Change it.
Okay.
So you want to make a note to change the room, probably, I think.
Yeah, I'm going to have to check the schedule and see if we have a second.
Yeah, up here.
No. Okay. Anything else for business?
So, no, if you want to do motion to close...
A quick question. Could, could you bring a copy of the civil action against the ZBA? It, it didn't get delivered. They keep trying to deliver it.
Okay, so we can't talk about anything litigation without posting an executive session?
I think you can ask a mechanical question.
You can't get a copy?
Oh, no, I can give you a copy.
Okay, yeah, just a copy of it.
Oh, I thought you wanted, okay.
Nope, don't want to talk about it, just want a copy of it.
Okay.
Cool.
I had to go and pick it up. You have to sign for it.
You have to sign.
It's never, I'm never around when they try to deliver it and I'm never around during the day. Was it the office?
Just so you know, when, if you did want to have a meeting and talk about, right now, there's nothing to talk about.
Yeah, just a copy of it.
You would have to post an executive session at least 48 hours before, it'd have to be part of the agenda. We usually do it before some boards do it after, but just going to, okay. Okay, so motion to close the business meeting?
So moved.
All the, oops, second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can we take a recess?
Or five-minute recess?
Kathy, can we take a recess?
Um... Um.
Red light on.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, uh, good evening, we are back, the zoning board, March eighth, and we'd like to open the hearing by reading the legal ad.
Sure, an application has been made by Dallas and Audrey Gould of one sixty-nine Central Street Georgetown, Mass. For a special permit under Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections two-nine, seventy-four dash seventy-nine. The owner applicants are requesting to convert a single-family dwelling to a multi-family, parentheses, two-family dwelling. Premises affected is one sixty-nine Central Street Georgetown, Mass, in the R.A. District and identified in the assessor's map, ten A lot seven. Application will be heard by the zoning board of appeals at the Georgetown Todd Hall third floor meeting room on March eighth, two thousand sixteen, seven thirty. CMZBA file one six dash zero five.
Thanks, Sharon, I'd just like to introduce all the members who are, we're all voting tonight, I had to count. We've got a couple associates that are stepping up tonight, so it's David Twist, Sean Dean, Sharon Freeman, Jeff Moore, that's Patty, and I'm Gina Tebow.
And I'm Dallas Gould, this is Audrey Gould, appreciate it.
Nice to meet you.
Howdy, do I, Mark Janos, I'm their attorney, I'll be making a presentation to the board tonight.
Okay.
And.
Actually, you can go right into that.
Thank you, very much, uh, good evening, uh, members of the board, my name is Mark Janos, I'm an attorney, I have an office in Newburyport. And, uh, we're here tonight for the purposes of seeking a special permit in order to convert, uh, this structure from a single-family dwelling, uh, to a two-family dwelling. Just a couple of, uh, I'm sure that you've all received the package of documents and I'd probably want to, uh, touch on at least, uh, some of them. Um, as I think they're pertinent to my presentation, uh, the application, I think, speaks for itself. Um, there's a certified plot plan included in the package. We've included a letter which was received back in July and I should, uh, as an aside, um, this process began last summer. Uh, we had some difficulty in obtaining all the appropriate information from an engineer, took quite some time to put it all together. Based upon your requirements, uh, we were finally able to, uh, put it together, so what you'll see here on the board is reflective of, uh, quite a bit of, uh, back and forth to make sure that it was compliant with your rules and regulations. There's a letter contained, uh, here from the, uh, building inspector, uh, dated July twentieth. Uh, the, uh, the Goulds had originally gone before the, um, um, uh, building inspector requesting that they be allowed to have a, a two-family dwelling house. It was, uh, learned at that time that apparently in the past, it had been used as a multi-family dwelling house. In fact, historically, this structure was owned by, uh, the state hospital and had been used as a rooming house. And it was a place where doctors and nurses and so forth lived in various rooms. Uh, when I show you the floor plan, you'll see that, uh, the building is, uh, extensive, it's about seventy-one hundred square feet. It has quite a number of rooms in it and I think it was used in that capacity. Uh, in any event, um, in spite of the fact that, uh, certain tax information, uh, determined that it had been used in the past as a, uh, multi-family dwelling house. It was determined that because it had been used as a single-family dwelling, that that multi-family dwelling use was no longer available. And it was necessary to come before the board and, uh, request, uh, a special permit in order to be allowed to do so. We have a copy of the deed in here, we have some old plans, which I think were pertinent, I think you'll find that, uh, the old plans are consistent with, uh, the current, uh, layout, uh, the, the plot plan of the, of the structure. In fact, uh, our petition does not include making any structural or increasing the size of the footprint of the property. Uh, there'll be no, uh, external changes of any kind requested. And I think that the, uh, plans that I provided in your package, uh, will, uh, show that what we have is what was contained in the previous plans. Uh, my letter of, uh, representation, tax information, which is included in the package. Importantly, uh, we have, uh, information from the Board of Health, uh, indicating that the system is, uh, capable of sustaining, uh, up to nine bedrooms. It's a fairly extensive system, uh, in fact, uh, uh, the proposal this evening for a second dwelling unit, uh, will request only two bedrooms. And the balance of the bedrooms, if there are any, would be, uh, used by, uh, the Goulds, uh, if they, but it's just the two of them. They currently don't have any children or other members of family living with them, so you'll find that, uh, it was, uh, reviewed and, and that's what the determination was. The system is compliant currently with, uh, Board of Health requirements. We have a letter from the Conservation Commission indicating that, uh, I, I think it's also, uh, a component of the Board of Health information which was provided in your package. We have a, uh, building permit application, which was the basis for the denial by the, uh, building inspector. It's also in your package. Near the end of your package, you'll find there's a, uh, uh, information from the assessor's office regarding, uh, abutters, uh, uh, statutory abutters. And, um, I think I've included in here a, uh, the plan, uh, from the assessor's map indicating, uh, who these abutters are. And in, in, in particular, those abutters who have, uh, provided us with, um, a, uh, letter of endorsement regarding the, uh, our petition. Uh, I think you'll find that, uh, no one is in the audience this evening that I think is opposed to our request. All the neighbors have been, uh, spoken to and consulted with and they've all, uh, agreed and endorsed the plan that we're presenting tonight. We have additional assessors information. And finally, we have, uh, a series of pictures, which I think you'll find, uh, helpful in your determination. Uh, the structure is, uh, is, uh, has some age to it, it's, uh, quite beautiful, frankly. And, uh, I think it's, uh, significantly large enough to be able to accommodate a second, uh, structure. I also have my, uh, physician letter, which, uh, I'll speak to in a moment. As you can see, Central Street, we have the, uh, Batumis driveway, um, this, uh, driveway, uh, cars, uh, have the capacity to be able to park. This garage, uh, which, uh, currently, uh, contains, uh, four, four motor vehicles within the garage itself. Plus, there's a extensive area outside in the Batumis area where automobiles can park, uh, outside, uh, which is more than sufficient for, uh, what the proposal is this evening. Again, I'm hoping that you all have, uh, received copies of all of these, uh, plans. Which you have, uh, the, as you can see, uh, here, we have this, it's the, uh, first, second, and third floor plans. Uh, in the vault, you can see where the second unit is, uh, being posed, it should be in this area here, as well as in this area here. Uh, we have adequate ingress and egress, uh, from the exterior to the interior. And there's also additional, uh, doors between the units themselves, so in the event of any kind of, uh, an issue, a safety issue and so forth, uh, there'd be more than appropriate, um, ingress and egress, uh, from not only the existing unit, but, uh, the proposed unit as well. By the way, if I'm making my presentation, please stop me if you have questions.
I'm, I'm, I'm not so great at plans, on, on this view, can you explain to me which is, this is the.
That's in the real view, I.
Real view, which part is the two units?
It's actually the, the right side.
So in between the main house and the garage would be where the second unit would be?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep.
That's correct.
So one and two.
That's right.
Okay. That's what.
And so each one of the units has its own ingress and egress, in fact, uh, uh, several. And you can see here where it says, uh, uh, there's a shared entranceway here, there's an entrance, a s- an exclusive entrance to the second unit here. And I think that's contained in that part of the building, which is sort of between the garage and, and the main house.
And when it was three units, do you happen to know where that third unit was?
Don't really know.
Don't really know.
No, um, the, as you can see from the plan, the, uh, you know, there's this, there's a, an enormous number of rooms.
Yeah.
So where people used to stay, um, once upon a time, is anybody's guess, I think that it really wasn't determined at the time.
I'm familiar with the house, yeah. 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 Well, the prior owners rented as three, right? I thought I saw that letter, maybe I made that up.
The question seems, was the letter.
Yeah, I think it said they three, I was just curious, it, it, it may not have bearing today.
John had done a lot of research on that and, and he goes, when it was up for sale, people would come.
Right.
And he went and got accessories, so it was being taxed to three families.
Yeah, I saw that, I was just wondering where the third unit was, that's all.
Did, I don't know, do you, do you folks know where the third unit may have been?
I'm thinking it might have been on the third floor.
Third floor, okay.
Yeah.
Is there egress to the.
Yeah, there is, there's a firescape, actually.
Okay, okay.
Is, is it in the back of the building, the firescape?
It's, you can actually see it in the, in the plans, if you, uh, on the, on the side profile, if you go, if you go to the, um.
I'll go to the, uh.
The elevation plan?
Yes.
Um, go to the last elevation plan, oh wait, second to last.
P R one.
Yeah, you'll see it on the very top diagram.
Oh, there we go.
Yeah.
It must have been that, must have been the third floor and the.
Oh, I get it, okay.
That's a firescape, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Oh, it says it right there. There you go.
Uh, the, uh, the unit is, uh, uh, will contain approximately, uh, nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-four square feet, which is, uh, fairly substantial. The main residence, uh, will, uh, uh, have, uh, fifteen-hundred-and-thirty square feet, so that's a fairly substantial, uh, building. The building is seventy, it's seventy-one hundred square feet in total, uh, floor area, so it's. These are, uh, these are exterior, uh, views of, uh, the profile, uh, including the map we mentioned, the firescape. Front view includes unit, we've identified, uh, unit, uh, entrance, uh, to unit two. The garage is here, each garage is front to back, so that the cars would be able to, uh, to park, not side by side, but front to.
Oh, no, the side by side.
They'll be able to, to park side by side?
Yes.
Here's a shared entrance here, that's the main entrance door, uh, uh, the main house, the primary residence is here. And, uh, you can see we have, uh, elevations here as well, which is one of your requirements, showing, uh, the, the height of the building. Again, no exterior, uh, changes are, uh, since this time, um, I think it would be a shame to do it anyways, because I think it has, you know, such historic significance in terms of what it was built and, and how beautiful it looks. I think the, the colored pictures are really, you know, show, uh, you know, a beautiful building. So, uh, the intention here is not to really denigrate the character, I mean, in fact, I think it's consistent with when it was built, what it was used for, which is, uh, you know, numbers of individuals, uh, occupying various rooms over the course of time. Anybody have any questions at this point?
I think you just answered mine, I was having a hard time with the plans to try and determine if any exterior walls were changing or not, it didn't look like there was, so.
No, they're not.
I'm looking at the.
No, there's nothing exterior or interior, as far as we know, so.
Just internal renovation.
Yeah, so what, what exists is the way that they're going to be able to, uh, distinguish one unit from the other unit, so.
So, just for my own notification, with respect to the ingress, uh, internally from unit one to unit two, is it a doorway? Or is it a, like, one of those hotel doors that lock or something?
Um.
It's like a, it's a, yeah, it's a common area hallway.
Okay, so both doors come out to a common area?
Common area, okay.
Like a mudroom or something like that, like a breezeway?
Yeah, you could look at it as a mudroom.
Yeah. And that's that shared entrance door?
Yes.
Yes. And why, why are you choosing two units and not three?
I think it was, um, you know, they, um, at one point, they had thought the possibility of making it three, but then.
The Goulds.
Yeah, the, the Goulds.
Yeah.
After they had learned that it couldn't, you know, that, that they needed, uh, some, uh, approval in order to, um, expand upon it being a single-family residence. But I think the layout here is just more conducive to a two-unit dwelling house. Not to mention the fact that I think from, you know, from a special permit standpoint, I think without, you know, overburdening the current structure and, uh, the uses that are consistent with that particular neighborhood, you know, going from one to three is a little bit more difficult than going from one to two.
I guess I have a slightly different opinion based on, prior to what?
With three family, it would, it, you need to.
So my recollection in the last, am I allowed to talk about prior things that we've talked about? In a prior case.
Three units is not a.
We were told, I thought, that there was no thing in our bylaws said whether it, multi-family and a two-family, there was no, no explicit difference. That's my recollection from a prior case.
No, um, it's three, three-family.
Well, a three-family would trigger a segment.
We were told a multi-family could be two or more.
Three-family triggers.
It's, it's like, it wasn't explicit, we didn't in Georgetown have a difference between a two-family and a three-family. That was my understanding on the last case and maybe I was mistaken and that would be unfortunate because.
But the thing is, to make a three-family, they would have to.
It used to be a three-family, though.
Yeah, but th- these are all bedrooms now, there's no kitchen, there's, there's a bathroom, but there's no kitchen.
Mm-hmm, let me just read definitions, that might help.
What page?
Um, sixteen.
Yep.
I don't think so, it's not what they're applying for.
Well, that, I'm, I'm just asking, I think.
Under, under dwelling, so multi-family, a building used designed as a residence for two or three families living independently of each other, doing their own cooking, their own, but which may have joint services and facilities or both.
So I guess, what's your question? I'm sorry.
My, well, I guess, um, in thinking of prior cases, which I think we should be consistent. I think it would only be fair to be open and forthright, that if they presumed that two-family was all they could do, and that's not the case, then we need to be transparent and let them know, and if they choose to still go two-family, that's fine, and if they choose for three, because we don't in Georgetown have a specific that you must do X for two and Y for three, in which we didn't make anyone else do, then I think it's up to them and then they can, they would probably have to go back to their abutters and say, are you okay if it's a three? If they so want to do so, but I don't think it's fair of us to sort of proceed as though they don't have a third, a different option if that was what they initially hoped for and were led to believe that they couldn't, that's all.
Okay.
I think the decision, I think the decision to proceed with the two-family was based on a number of different factors, including, among other things, the, I, the, the sensitivity to expand it from one to three, which I think is a, a bigger jump.
Which I can tell you in a prior case was an issue and it's much, this structure is set up to me to be much, that's not as big of a jump as what we did prior, and I think it would be disingenuous of me to suggest that you're only limited to two. And if you still wanna go for two, that's fine, but.
I, I think this, um, I think that if, you know, based on the discussion tonight and hopefully the board looking favorably upon the petition, if the Goulds decide, you know, that, that the physical layout of, of the building is conducive to adding an additional, uh, unit, then, you know, they can proceed to come back before the board and ask for yet another unit at this point. That's not what we're here for this evening, but, um, that's certainly good for them to know if they can, if they can make it work. And obviously, a lot of it is not just having a big structure and a whole lot of rooms, but having rooms that are conducive to having, you know.
Functional living space.
Yeah, living spaces that have their own integrity, have their own, you know, ingress and egress, those kinds of things.
And a structure that size with, I've, I've been on it in a historic tour, it is clearly capable of doing that, in my personal opinion. So, I, I'm just, I guess I just feel like we should lay it out, that it might be an option if you wanted to reconsider, if you wanna proceed with two.
I'm perfectly fine with your application.
Let me ask you this, do you wanna proceed this evening?
And this is only my opinion, not the board's opinion.
Drive the petition and go for three?
I mean.
No, no, I think we'll just con- continue and then, just the way you said, yeah.
Okay.
Just if you did, a three-family is a different set of rules.
Mm-hmm.
It would trigger site plan approval through the planning board and it would require a water resource permit to the zoning board.
Well, I think, um, they've, they've spoken to me and they, their, their, um, belief is that we should proceed on the petition that we filed tonight. I think if they learn after tonight that they have an opportunity to be able to come back before the board and whatever other requirements, including site plan review with the planning board, with, yeah, okay, then they'd make that decision.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Any other questions, uh, before I, uh, proceed?
I wanted to just double check on, on parking, you got, you can fit four cars inside, how many?
In the driveway? Oh, here?
Yeah, probably ten. Yeah, I know, for the record, I mean, it's.
If they needed to do that, I mean, obviously, we're talking about.
You could actually park ten there.
Yeah, so you're looking at two family, and, and the number of bedrooms per unit, I was kind of.
So there's a lot in the main residence.
In general, you're gonna end up with two units, with how many bedrooms each? Probably quite a few, actually.
Well, uh, two for the, uh, second unit and.
Seven.
Seven.
Seven for the other unit?
You guys are gonna be residing in the.
Seven, yeah.
Seven, okay.
And I'm sorry, I know you said this and I've been looking for it and I'm, can't, Board of Health, how many, what's the, um.
The, the Board of Health indicated that, uh, the si- system was capable of sustaining, uh, nine.
Okay.
Uh, nine bedrooms.
Okay, and that's what's there.
That's in your package.
Thank you, I know you said it, I just couldn't put my fingers on it.
The garage, with respect to this photo, you pull in and then walk out?
It is.
Or is there a way to your unit from the garage?
You have to walk out, there's, there's, it's, uh, encapsulated, so you'd have to, um, walk out.
For both units, neither.
That's correct.
Okay. And there's no intent on changing that internal doorway to the unit?
No, not at this, not at this time. Special permit, um, your, uh, ordinance, uh, particularly, uh, the sections nine and seventy-four through seventy-nine, uh, provide for a special permit, use may be granted by your board, um, provided that you meet the requisite requirements. Uh, and I can list as, uh, generally speaking, there are, there's a list of about eight or nine that, uh, I'd like to, uh, touch on briefly. Uh, the use is listed in the table of uses, which it is, uh, the request is certainly desirable and, uh, and we believe essential, uh, to public convenience, uh, providing additional housing for, uh, for the community. The, given what we proposed, uh, we don't believe that, uh, this, uh, proposal will create any undue traffic congestion. Parking, Central Street is a fairly, uh, well-traveled street, uh, the site lines are, are fairly good, so I think that people, uh, exiting from the property itself onto Central Street, there won't be any issues regarding, uh, that. It will not overload any public water, uh, or drainage systems or sewer systems that we're aware of. Of course, it is serviced by a septic system, so that's all internal on the property itself. And we don't believe that, uh, it will unduly, uh, subject, uh, the neighborhood or this property to any hazards affecting health, safety, and the public welfare. Special permit on your ordinance, particularly the sections nine and seventy-four through seventy-nine, provide for a special permit. Use may be granted by your board, provided that you meet the requisite requirements, and I can list this, uh, generally speaking, there are, there's a list of about eight or nine that I'd like to touch on briefly. The use is listed in the table of uses, which it is. Uh, the request is certainly desirable, and, uh, we believe essential, uh, to public convenience, providing additional housing for, uh, for the community. Uh, the, given what we proposed, we don't believe that, uh, this proposal will create any undue traffic congestion. We had a good parking. Central Street is a fairly, uh, well-traveled street. Uh, the site lines are, are fairly good, so I think that people, uh, exiting from the property itself onto Central Street, there won't be any issues regarding, uh, that. Uh, it will not overload any public water, uh, or drainage systems or sewer systems that we're aware of. Of course, it is serviced by a septic system, so that's all internal on the property itself, and we don't believe that it will unduly, uh, subject, uh, the neighborhood or this property to any hazards affecting health, safety, and the public welfare. Uh, I don't believe that there are special rules and regulations with respect to this petition, uh, but we do believe that it will not impair the integrity of the character of the neighborhood. Uh, in fact, one of the, I think the central issues that, you know, we've, we've seen here is that because of the, this structure, because of its age and its historic integrity, uh, we, we believe that, uh, by, uh, the petition that we filed tonight, it will not interfere with that integrity, and we think that that's an important component, uh, to, uh, our petition this evening. Uh, the request will not, by its addition to the neighborhood, cause any excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. As I've, uh, pointed out, uh, previously, all the neighbors who are butters' property, uh, have, uh, provided us in the boards with, uh, letters of approval, and, uh, we would ask you to take that into consideration. Uh, we don't believe there'll be any, uh, emission of any dangerous and noxious fumes or chemicals or things like that, and I'm just quoting the statute frankly, uh, but, uh, in support of this particular petition, uh, the property is, uh, has been used as a residence and will continue to be used as a residence, uh, where we would have, uh, we would request, uh, the addition of this second, uh, residence, um, and, uh, we believe that, uh, there's a provision in your use tables, uh, allowing for conversion, which I think is, this is the applicable, uh, use table, uh, I think it's under the Use Regulation Schedule, called conversion, so, uh, it's, uh, contained within your, uh, within your bylaw. Uh, we believe that, uh, you know, as property has become, uh, built out, or communities become built out, we think that, uh, adding additional housing stock is certainly, uh, appropriate and favorable, uh, without denigrating the character of the neighborhood. Uh, we don't believe, and we've spoken about the, the traffic issue, which I don't believe, uh, will be affected. Uh, we believe that, uh, this addition is, uh, minimal in terms of, uh, its, uh, addition to the, uh, neighborhood. Uh, we believe that one, uh, residential, uh, unit will have little or no impact on municipal systems, uh, nor will the addition, uh, of that unit unduly subject, uh, such services to any, uh, untoward, uh, health, safety, or general welfare issues, and as I said before, the existing, uh, septic system is more than adequate to accommodate not only what we proposed, but many, many more. Uh, the, um, we don't believe that there are any special, uh, regulations with respect to this, although we would certainly, uh, if the board were inclined to impose conditions, uh, we would be, uh, willing to, uh, consider them, of course. Uh, the residential nature of that particular zoning district will not be impaired, we believe, by the addition of one additional unit, uh, and there is, uh, not an excess of these kinds of uses in that particular zoning district that we believe will, you know, create a new kind of, uh, environment within, uh, the RA, uh, zone.
Excuse me, thank you.
As I indicated, this, uh, lot is, is forty-five thousand square feet, so it's, uh, well over, it's not well over, but a little over an acre. Uh, the, uh, the building footprint is approximately seven thousand one hundred square feet, so dimensionally, this structure complies with all of your dimensional requirements, and because we're not making any changes to the exterior footprint of the property, we're not requesting any, uh, zoning relief, uh, either by way of variance or otherwise, uh, so.
So there's no non, no existing nonconformities on the existing lot?
Not on, not on this structure. No, it complies in every regard with respect to, uh, side yard setbacks, uh, frontage requirements. It's more than adequate for us to do, I mean, the lot is gigantic, and the building is equally gigantic, but, um, it, it was strategically placed right in the middle of the lot, so it's, you know, it really has all of the, and it still has this, this regal setting, uh, which is not something that we, uh, believe would be interfered with by requesting an additional unit.
Could I, could I interrupt you for just a second?
Certainly.
And do you mind just taking a second to talk about what, what you are, what your plans are for the renovation inside? So what, what are you doing? You're probably adding a kitchen, or?
No, we're not doing anything. Every, it's, it's all ready.
Okay, so you, I, I saw a building permit in there. You mentioned a building permit, so I was just wondering what changes were planned to be made?
Well, we, I think it was suggested. It was suggested that a building permit was necessary in order to proceed to the next level, requesting a, um, and I believe that.
Oh, for the denial, for the denial, okay, I understand. So you're not planning on actually doing any work?
This community, if for the denial, you need to file a building permit. In, in new report where I practice, you can simply ask a building inspector, assuming for the sake of discussion that you would be denied, you would simply request that he issue you a denial, as opposed to filing a building permit.
Got it.
And so, in this particular case, it, you know.
They had to file a permit to get denied.
Form over substance, you file the permit, you deny it, and then you take it to the next level.
Okay.
So the, the kitchen, the kitchen facilities exist for both units? It's, there's no real work to be done?
Yeah, there's no work to be done.
Excellent.
This is essentially move-in condition at this point. You can see from the pictures that the, that the interiors.
And it was that way when you bought it?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and it's beautiful.
Probably the news isn't too bad.
It does, it looks beautiful. Unit, so I, so I can kind of place where we're at. This is the first floor, front door of the rental unit?
Uh, that's the first floor.
Well, that's the kitchen of the first floor.
Right.
There's a patio, uh, next to the, with it.
What is on the left here? That's pool, okay.
That's pool, yeah.
Okay.
So, and the pictures are all of, of the rental?
As, as it exists.
Yep, okay.
All right.
You will still need to get just sort of nine, um, sign-offs if you haven't already on that building permit that was filed, with, yeah, the new building inspector, so, um, he may have you get more signatures, just, I don't know, I don't know, you need, when, when we get the decision, whatever it may be.
For a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, just, I don't know, just, I would just see him.
Oh, on the back of the building permit?
We had, yeah, 'cause, um, we just had a, a recent multi-family where he had started the building permit, but then, um, it was a lot different than this, you know, we, we can do.
Yes.
So are you suggesting that, with, assuming that the board would be favorable to our petition, that we would take that favorable ruling back to the building inspector, who would then, uh, issue a permit, and then do an inspection and confirm?
However he chooses.
However he chooses, that it is.
Gina's right, it may be an occupancy, it's an occupancy permit.
Issue an occupancy permit.
But he's gotta get the sign-off from the board.
Yeah, because right now.
Instead of the, you know, everybody believed it was a three-family dwelling house once upon a time, and no one really took the effort to, you know, walk through the appropriate channels to get that determination?
And he may or may not walk through, I think, but I think technically you need a certificate of occupancy in order for anybody to reside in there.
Right.
And we don't issue those, so you will have to go back to the building.
That makes sense.
Um, inspector, just to, at the very least, do that. Maybe he's gonna require everyone to walk through and check.
That makes sense.
Everything's up to code, I don't know.
And if he sees the, if he sees, if you approve, if he sees the approval, and, you know, he sees all the, the supporting documentation to substantiate that approval, then he'll say, okay, here's the other, I don't know how they identify one unit from the other, uh, from the building permit standpoint, but that's up to the building inspector, I meant.
Yeah, if, say if this was granted tonight and we did a decision, then he would get that copy, um, but you wouldn't get a building permit, you know, after twenty days, to actually get, I should think they get, oh, yeah.
Of course.
When he decides.
Right. The lot is favorable. Um, with respect to the lot, is there gonna be some defined areas of which belong to each unit?
Um, I mean, we're kind of looking at, maybe being shared, I think that's kind of what we're looking at it.
Okay.
Shared. I think the pool is probably gonna be off limits, though. That's a good.
Fenced in?
Yeah, it's fenced in. That would be just ours.
But the yard itself will be open, too? Okay. I just didn't know if there was gonna need to be fencing put up, or.
I don't know.
Uh, anything of that sort.
No, I think that the, the rest of the area, well, the deck belongs to you folks, right? The deck out back here?
Um, it's actually shared.
Is it shared deck?
Back here, yeah.
Okay, and the pool is.
Is ours.
Fenced and belongs to you?
Mm-hmm.
And this deck here is your deck, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So can I ask, I, I have a question. I think it's more for us. There, there's a handwritten note on this, but I don't understand what it means. What assessor sees not permitted?
The assessor just goes out and looks at it, and, and what he visually sees, but it doesn't necessarily mean he comes back and checks to make sure it's permitted that way.
I, I still don't understand. What the assessor sees.
So when an assessor goes in to assess the house.
Yeah.
He walks in, and what he sees is that it's a three-family. He doesn't know whether there's a permit associated with it or not, so he assesses the taxes based on what he sees, not what's permitted in the file.
Where was, where is that, by the way?
It's handwritten on the.
On your vision appraisal front page?
I guess so.
That might just be our copy from Jay.
It might be. I don't have a, I don't have any.
So basically, an assessor went to this.
It's just when John was checking it out.
Large house and just made a visual, this doesn't appear to be anything other than a single family.
That's what he does when he goes.
Okay, but it's written right here that it's three-family.
Right, 'cause that's what he saw when he went in to appraise the house. Doesn't necessarily mean they're.
It's not your note.
So I don't, I guess I don't understand why this is tied in the first place, because it's clearly a three-family.
Well, there's no permit.
I don't get.
Yeah, that's just something I wrote on there when I was talking to Jay.
There's no permit for a three-family, and yet it's here.
It's because of what he sees.
It's not, it's not black and white. When they go out and they look at something.
But if it's on the card.
Yeah, but the assessor doesn't, he's not the permit guy.
Right.
He's an assessor. He deals with the taxes. He doesn't know anything about the permits.
Oftentimes, the assessor isn't even, it's a third-party company that's hired by the town, so they go out, they don't know what's been filed with the town, if there's a approved permit or an approved zoning board or anything.
Right. So what John is saying, he never had a permit on file for this to be a three-family?
Correct.
Correct.
Even though it was historically a three-family? Maybe because we didn't collect records, or maybe we forgot to hire the building inspector?
Or, or because someone said, went to the assessor and said, I have a three-family, or it's been used historically as a three-family. I've run into the situation in the past, in new report in particular, where, you know, they've taken houses and they've created on a, like a, a top story, they've created a, and so, um, they'd go to the assessor's office and they'd say, we have another unit, so the assessor would write a little note into the assessor's card saying, you know, second unit.
Oh, by the way.
And, yeah.
So we're correcting the record.
Exactly.
Okay, that's fine.
I, I think, it, as you noted earlier, the building inspector could not make a determination that this was a pre-existing, non-conforming use, because at some point in time, it seems like maybe this was, in fact, used as a, as a single family along the way, right?
Correct. In fact, this letter is very, this letter from the building inspector, I think, is really indicative of what he found.
Right.
Um, and I think, I think it really does speak to that issue.
Okay.
Was it the, the previous owner, how long have you owned the house?
Less than two years.
Okay, so did the previous owners use it as a single family?
Two-family.
Two.
A two-family, so I don't know. He indicates on that letter, I think, I, I gotta dig it up.
He does.
Doesn't he say it was used as a single family at some point?
The review shows a major, oh, rated, prior to nineteen sixty-six, oh, where does he go? Uh, existing structure was converted to a three-family prior to your recent purchase, and I think he's addressing that statement to the Goulds. The review of our records show the assessors began assessing the structure as a three-family in nineteen ninety-six, probably because someone went in there and says, we're using it as a three-family, so the assessors', uh, records were altered to reflect what someone said versus what, what was permitted.
What was permitted. Okay, I get it.
So when you bought.
But there's not enough information to confirm it to pre-existing, non-conforming use, I guess, so.
History, and that's not, in history, it's not sufficient.
That's fine, now I understand.
And historically, that's not sufficient to, you know, to give it that, you know, that three-family status.
Bought the house, was there a third kitchen in the house?
Um, it was, uh, there was a, um, like a fridge upstairs on the third floor. Um, I mean, it wasn't, it's not really like a full.
No stove, or?
Um, there was a.
I think there was a stove there at one point.
But they took, yeah.
But it was not there when you moved in, it was removed.
Right, you can see where, where it was, but, yeah, yeah.
And then, and now, did you renovate that so it's all bedrooms for your residence?
Um, right now, the third floor is just storage.
Okay.
We, we just plan on keeping it storage right now.
It's a separate utilities?
Yes, it is, mm-hmm.
The third floors.
Oh, um.
Third floors, it's on furnace, yeah.
Huh.
Yeah, which we've, we've never really used, but.
So somebody probably did this like a long time ago and didn't get a permit.
This was a rooming house, and so my guess is that it used, rather than have, um, you know, specific, uh, spatial residences, you probably had.
Just all bedrooms and then.
Somebody living here, someone sleeping here, someone sleeping here, occasionally going to the kitchen and getting something to eat, going into the study, and so it was, you know, more of a traditional rooming house, as opposed to.
That's exactly what it was. That's a good historical society.
Yeah. I think that's where the doctors and the nurses used to live, so everybody had their own bedroom, it's just like, you know, a big city.
Yep.
You know, common bathrooms, you knock on the door, you know, those kinds of things, so.
The good old days. Okay.
Do you want to read the exhibit?
Yeah. Um, I just have to read the exhibits since a record formally. Uh, exhibit A is sheet marked EC one, a certified plot plan, existing conditions dated nine, seven, fifteen, by professional land, by professional land surveying of Groveland, Mass, sta, stamped by Brian G. Parmenter. Exhibit B, sheet marked EC dash two, first, second, and third floor plans, by the same. Exhibit C, sheet marked PR one, elevation drawings, left front, elevations by the same. Exhibit D, sheet marked PR dash two, elevation of right side and real elevation by the same. Exhibit E, sheet marked EC dash three, first, second, and third floor plans, by the same. And finally, exhibit F, septic system as built by Moran Cameron Group, Inc., drawn by Scott P. Cameron, civil engineer, dated four, two, fourteen. Okay, um, we have nobody in the audience. Any questions from the board?
No, I have some comments when you get to it.
Okay, um, you've kind of summarized everything. Is there anything else you wanted to say? Anyone? No? Okay.
I did have one, um, just a, just a curious question. I, your, uh, section one sixty-five ninety-four, uh, entitled, uh, pre-existing, non-conforming uses, says, "A pre-existing, non-conforming structures or uses may be extended or altered, provided that no such extension or alteration shall be permitted unless there is a finding by the Board of Appeals in granting a special permit that such change, extension, or alteration shall not be substantially more detrimental in the existing, non-conforming use of the neighborhood," period. The next sentence says, "A special permit shall not be required when alteration, reconstruction, extension, or structural change to a single or two-family residential structure does not increase the non-conforming nature of said structure." I find those two statements to be inconsistent.
Building inspectors say the same thing.
Yeah, they've been in there for a while.
Yeah, so it was almost like, when I read the second line, it said, well, we don't really need a special permit, because it already contemplates that it's not gonna be more than two.
Well, one, the first sentencing.
The first sentence requires it.
For uses. Second sentence refers to structures only.
Only to structures.
I believe.
Well, again, you know, I read it and I said, well, these seem to be somewhat inconsistent, but in, in any event.
Yeah, I agree.
We took the path of least resistance and we decided to file for a special permit.
So we can go into.
Because it has to do with the use, I think.
Yeah, yeah, this is a use note. Okay, board discussion?
Well, I'll jump in, 'cause I said I had a comment. So I, you know, in, in this case, this is obviously, it's not obvious, but in my opinion, this is a perfect application for a two-family, not just because it's been used that way, obviously in the past, it's multi-family, but, I mean, there's a few iconic homes in town that I think are very important to, to maintain, and, you know, this is one of them, um, and it's important for an owner to be able to have some financial resources for the long term, to be able to maintain a, a structure like this, it's, they're not inexpensive, and unless you've got one enormous family that not too many people have, I mean, this is a great application in, to have two families, and there's plenty of parking, plenty of off-street parking, there's plenty of garage space, all the stuff that's been talked about, and, uh, it's a, it's a good solution to maintain a, a very attractive house for the long term. We've had other hearings in the past where some other homes in town were contemplated to be demolished, or substantially renovated, or, or, you know, altered in some way, and I've, I've had some heartache with that. This is a, a good example of how to, how to maintain something that's, that's really good in town, so I'm, uh, I'm in favor of the, of the application, so I'll throw that out there, and I'm willing to make a motion on it, but maybe you guys have some other comments as well.
The one thing I would like to say is thank you for coming before the board and actually getting a legal permit to proceed. It's obvious that the person before you was, had this as a, a rental apartment, unless there was family, I, I'm not sure, but either way, they needed to come before us and they didn't, so thank you for, for doing that. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Speaking for the town. Um, doesn't always happen that way.
Thank you for having us, too.
No, it doesn't always happen that way.
No, and so, it's nice that you're on. No. And so, it's nice that you're honest and forthright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I would agree with Jeff. I think, given the location, and, I mean, I've always, you know, having only lived here for four or five years, you drive by and wonder what the history is of the house and what the use is, and, you know, I think the application fits in this, in this particular instance. So, I too, you know, would agree that this is appropriate.
You might wanna check with the Historical Society, 'cause I think we have information on how that house had been used and stuff, if you're interested in that kind of stuff.
I think there might be something in the building file that John looked into, 'cause he went into this for months with the assessor.
Pretty amazing house.
I know, I'm actually, I'd like a tour.
I was actually on the historic house tour years back.
They might even have some, like, cool old pictures that you can make copies of, you know, that you might wanna have, like, hung somewhere. Anyway.
If you ever wanted to run a bed and breakfast, that might be something else.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure you'd love to do that.
And it would be conducive for that use, actually.
Actually, it would be, it would be a perfect use for that.
That was a relatively new addition to our bylaw. There's only a couple places in town where it might fit. This is probably one of them that the planner had in mind at the time. But anyway, that, so be it. Do we need to make a motion at this point?
Yes.
All right. I would move that for the application for one sixty-nine Central Street, that the board find that requested use, as required by the Georgetown zoning bylaws, chapter one sixty-five, section seventy-nine, is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, will not overload any public water or other municipal systems, so as to unduly subject any area to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare, and will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, and will not cause an excess of that particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. And I move that the board grant to Dallas and Audrey Gould of one sixty-nine Central Street in the RA District and identified on assessor's map, ten A, Lot seven, Georgetown, Mass., a special permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections two, nine, seventy-four to seventy-nine, request to convert a single-family dwelling to a multifamily two-unit dwelling.
Second, that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Will you read the last?
Appreciate it.
So, I'll hold on a second.
Oh, yeah, I've gotta read, yep. There's a twenty-day appeal period. Fourteen days the clerk has to file a written decision with the town clerk. A person exercises, a person who exercises rights under an appealed permit, special variance, does so at your own risk.
And motion to.
Close the hearing.
When can you typically post your decision?
We have fourteen days to, to write the decision, get it signed, and stamp it by the town clerk, and in that case, I could, I could give you a call and know that. And registry instructions, you gotta go to the town clerk, he'll certify that there was no appeal filed, and then you can go to the registry and then you bring back copy for the building inspector and copy for us.
Can you send me a copy when you post it, so that we know when the date is that we can come back and get the?
Oh, yeah, I'll put it right on the registry instructions. I'll put the twenty-day date.
Since you're not doing any construction, is that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Unless you've got somebody eager to move in, I suppose.
Well, that's a possibility, of course. You know, we, we don't wanna, as you know, sometimes people file appeals a day late or whatever, but we don't anticipate that. You know, everybody's really been supportive of the Goulds, so we think that that will continue on.
Well, it's a nice place, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for everything. All right.
This hearing, someone?
So, move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.